Good evening. Tonight's July 15, 2021, Special City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight's prayer and pledge will be led by five-year-old Adina Henry, who attends Kid Country Daycare and is a houseguest of District Two Councilwoman Nona Snotty. Please rise.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now bow your heads for the prayer. Thank you God for this new day in our school, to work, and pray. Please be with me all day long in every story, game, and song. Make all the happy things we do make you our father have we do. Amen.
Amen. (applause). Adina, you are becoming the highlight of this meeting tonight, I guarantee you. Thank you so much for coming and doing that. That takes a lot of courage to stand up in front of all these people and do that, so we are very appreciative and very proud of you, sweetheart. Thank you. We're now to employee recognition. On Saturday, January 30, 2021, the COVID-19 Vaccine Hub opened for business. The hub was a collaborative effort of Chris Just Good Shepard, Gregg County, and the city of Longview, with each entity bringing a variety of resources to the event in order to best serve the community. After five months of operation, the hub finally was able to close after providing more than 60,000 vaccinations. Among the most valuable resources provided by the city was our personnel. From managing the large volume of traffic to actually administering vaccines, registering patients, carrying supplies, and cleaning, disinfecting, most city departments had an ongoing role in continuity of operations. If you refer to the screen, you'll see the names of everyone involved, more than 180 of our employees. To represent this wide variety of support, we have department representatives with us tonight. Please come forward if you're a part of that department representative.[200.01][200.01](applause). Wow. that you provided for the citizens of Longview, Gregg County, and the surrounding areas, and far-reaching, farther than you probably ever will know how far this hub reached people and how many lives it saved. And you know, it's a testament to the city of Longview, to our departments, to your commitment to who you are. And I just, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate what you've done. Y'all sacrifices are what made this hub successful. Nothing beyond that. The people here representing the departments has went out there, weekend after weekend, giving up their time, your Saturdays and Sundays, to do for other people. It's immeasurable. It's immeasurable. And so, you all have crowns in heaven that'll be waiting for you. So thank you very much for what you've done for the city of Longview and those around us. Thank you all.[294.14][294.14](applause). We're now to the added item on our agenda tonight concerning this resolution before us. I would like to begin this evening by speaking about the unverified gathering that is alleged to take place in Longview in September promoting white supremacy and hate. Over the last week, we have really been through the wringer. And for what? An unverified, undocumented, unconfirmed gathering which nobody, and I mean nobody, from local all the way to federal law enforcement agencies can find a shred of truth or validity to. This unverified and undocumented alleged future gathering has disrupted our entire community over the last week, and to say I'm disappointed in those that have allowed and perpetuated that is a gross understatement. Prior to last week, if someone would have told me that an acorn falling on our heads would have resulted in the "sky is falling" mentality that I have witnessed, I would have never believed it. You see, I would have sworn that if an unverified, undocumented, unconfirmed gathering promoted in Longview, that every single one of you sitting in this dais would have quickly, confidently, wisely, maturely, boldly reassured our community that we would never, ever allow a resident of Longview, much less East Texas, to be threatened, treated harshly, unfairly, targeted with hate, anger, left unprotected or exposed, and there is no shred of truth to it. I would have expected you to quickly and confidently let your constituents know that there is no validity to this alleged event because you personally contacted our police chief and spoke with him about it. Because if you had, you would have known that this, as with all potential threats to our city, our law enforcement knew about it days before you and the public knew about it. And they were already working diligently with not just local neighboring authorities, but also state and federal agencies to determine any evidence about it. And they have found zero. Had you taken the time to do that or to speak with me about it, you would have known that this could have quickly been dispelled with the concerns of our community. But I have on good account that not one of you took this threat seriously enough to speak to our chief about it, outside of myself. But instead, we took the opportunity to politicize this topic via public statements, news outlets, media outlets, Facebook, social media, which only served to raise more polarity, concern, and fear in our community. This is unacceptable. We're better than this. In doing so, some of you all have cast me in a light of being a racist. Let me assure you, I am not now nor ever will be such. Before you label me a racist, you need to understand a few things. I'm as much a minority as a lot of you in this room. I'm half Lebanese, I'm half Middle Eastern. I'm not 100% Caucasian. I'm not a white boy as I've been called so many times this week. Let me explain something very clearly, and to have to continue to state it either means you aren't listening or you don't want to hear what I have to say. I do not see color. I see people. The God I worship, my God in heaven, teaches me we are all created equal: red, yellow, black, white, man, woman. It doesn't get any simpler than that. This is what I believe, this is how I live my life, these are the values I've instilled in my children. I denounce racism in any and all forms. So you can call me a racist, you can call me an ax murderer, but neither one of those is true. Just because you say it does not make it true. You can't make me something that I'm not, so you should quit trying. Those of us on these chairs were elected to be leaders, and as leaders, it is our job to vet out any concerns of our constituents. And in doing so, it means we talk to trusted experts within our city and beyond to gather facts, not emotion, and then share those facts with our constituents. We are to be brave, strong, standing up for those who cannot fight for themselves, and probably most of all, we're here to serve. And quite frankly, I don't think that's how we have handled this scenario. Some of us have taken, and I say "us" because I'm included, have taken this opportunity to exploit a very heated and sensitive race topic which only serves to cause further divide and cause distrust in our community. I am very disappointed to see that, extremely disappointed. It is not who we are, it is not what we stand for. I thought we stood united as one Longview. There have been a lot of words thrown around lately, some words that are hard to hear and some that are hard to say: racist, too white, too brown, hatred, unity, coward. Instead of doing so much declaring about our positions on things, can't we just be about it, not just talk about it? I would hope that my very friends in this room and those sitting at this table with me would know that based on my past experience, I would not only stand to defend them, but would run to defend any and all evil against any of those in our city. Any of you, I would run to your defense. Some of you that are screaming for unity are the ones doing the name-calling and creating division. Name-calling and insulting people is no way to get things done. Remember, actions always speak louder than words. And speaking of standing, it has been said that local leaders of Longview and Gregg County need to stand up. To that, I say, exactly when have we stood down? I can say with comments that I have never stood down to a controversial topic in my life, and I certainly don't intend to do so today. Standing up during difficult times has never been easy, and I would have thought over the last year dealing with this COVID-19 pandemic, you would see that even when the going gets tough, I am still here doing my best to be honest and communicative with you about everything that's going on. Everything. I haven't hidden a thing from the city of Longview. Matter of fact, I can say with complete truthfulness that I know for a fact, not one single council member stands for racism or would even tolerate it. Mr. Carpenter, Ms. Snotty, Mr. Wade, Ms. Ishihara, Mr. Wright, Mr. Pertle, I don't even have to ask you what your position is on these things. You know why? Because I know what your position is. Mr. Carpenter, I know you're the least of all these folks, but I wouldn't dare insult you by asking if you supported a white supremacist rally. I know you wouldn't stand for it because I know how you serve. And Nona, I've known you the longest, since we were kids, and I love you, and I know you love me. But I can't imagine you would question my integrity on this because you know me better than that, and I know you better than that. None of us would ever stand for racism or anything like this. That goes without being said. The same way we would not stand for atrocities of any kind to any humans: homicide, child abuse, domestic violence, battery, armed robbery, this list goes on and on. What's surprising to me is that nobody is calling for any of these things to be denounced verbally or publicly because our position is implied by the integrity that we've already shown. I would bet not one person is here tonight to ask for me or any council member to denounce any of these sins. That's why we are here, because that does not serve the objective of this evil agenda that's being promoted. You see, some bells can't be unrung, some words can't be taken back, some lines can't be redrawn. What would have happened if you had taken a beat, a pause to think about the long game on this? To indulge this potential gathering with words based on the source being Facebook, Facebook of all things, and a Jerusalem newspaper which has no credence, has done nothing but cast attention on this horrible sin of hatred and breathe life into evil? Think about that for a moment. An American newspaper did not report on this unverified event. What on earth would a Jerusalem newspaper have an interest in Longview for? Wouldn't a national publication pick up this story? Wouldn't they want to cover this? I can't help but think they didn't do so because there is no verified source or detail about this alleged event. So basically, we did just what this hateful organization wanted us to do. We breathed life into it. We tore apart our neighbors and gave it attention. We gave it attention and promoted evil by giving it an ounce of attention in discussing this unverified, undocumented alleged event. We did this. We called attention to it. How terrible. I expect better of this out of you and of me for our community. We should not breathe life into rumors or falsehoods which should not promote unity for our community. And they're not going to like this at all, but our local media sources, this is one of the worst and most irresponsible examples of journalism, and I use that word lucid I've ever seen. To print, promote repeatedly, interview, dare I say churn, this story without one single-sided source shows you're not clearly for Longview but seeking to sell newspapers to pad your pockets at the expense of loving communities who has made such amazing progress in six years, I would have never thought this possible. But there we are, tearing it down by promoting false, unverified, unsourced information to make a buck on the backs of hard-working and loving East Texas. It's despicable to me. What if we saw a post on Facebook that there were nuclear missiles hurling towards the United States? Would we immediately push the button and fire our missiles? Of course not. If we did, we'd be into a nuclear holocaust for no reason. A knee-jerk reaction. In times such as these, cool heads need to prevail. I would hope we can learn from this and not repeat our mistakes. We have a lot of work to do in Longview, but this, this does not help us achieve our goals. This drives us apart. Some of you are here tonight because you love and are concerned for our community, and I am thankful that each one of you care to show up and speak out against racism. But let me assure you, despite what you may have read, you are not alone. We are truly one Longview and stand united in fighting racism of any kind. You are here because you love your neighbors and don't want them to be harmed or mistreated, fearful or worried. And guess what? Neither do I. And when and if there is a credible threat of terror group of any kind coming to Longview to attempt to tear us down, you can bet I will be the first one to denounce it. I will be standing in front of you to shoo them away. It goes without saying, but let me allow to say it very plainly and clear to you tonight. I do not and will not condone any hate or racist group seeking to harm or threaten our citizens. I will not stand for it in those who live in our community, and I do not stand for it for those who do not live in our community but would come here to seek harm. We would never indulge any organization promoting racism of any kind or find it acceptable in any way. It is not okay. It is not acceptable. It is repulsive and disgusting. Racism and hate groups are not welcome in Longview. Tonight, we will sign a ceremonious resolution stating the obvious because it's important that our citizens know they are loved, treasured, and protected regardless of their race, religion, creed, sexuality, and all things that make up the fabric of America. I consider Longview a small town in America, a model city for the rest of the country to seek and to replicate. But this behavior this past week has just not been our best, and I expect better out of our council first and foremost as you set the tone for our city. It's critical that we remember our authority is such that protects our citizens through our obligation of public safety, but remember, we do not have the authority to restrict free speech or dictate what is occurring within the private homes within our community. As long as people are abiding in the laws and not infringing upon the rights of others, they are welcome to express themselves, even if I disagree with it. We do not have the authority or ability to restrict what happens within the confines of each person's private homes. Do not believe anyone would want us to do so. Just as our city council cannot determine what you eat for dinner, where you go to bed, how you parent your children, when you host barbecues, when and how you host baby showers, or where you attend worship services, we cannot restrict private meetings within the homes of our residents. We do not get to ask for freedom on the things we like, but yet ask for government to intercede on the things that we disagree with. It just doesn't work that way. Going forward, my charge for all of you in this room and beyond is to look before you leap. Trust your city leaders who are serving this community out of love and sacrifice and doing the best they can. Sometimes we mess up. Sometimes emotions run high, as in this case, but it's time for a course correction. It's time for all of us to stop this bickering and draw lines in the sand that can't be erased. Just stop it. This is one Longview, and I just won't have it any other way. We need to do better. We are better. We will now sign and pass this ceremonious resolution showing exactly what will and won't be tolerated in this community surrounding this unverified alleged gathering. I want to remind you, this is once again ceremonious, but remember this: take comfort. The federal government provided protection for all races, creeds, religions, and genders in 1964, nearly 60 years ago, for this very thing. We are all protected, but we are here to love each other and do for each other. That said, I'm going to read the resolution, and I will subsequently ask for a motion which will hopefully pass and heal this community. Here is the resolution. Whereas the city council of the city of Longview has become aware of a so-called White Unity Conference allegedly planned to be held on September 25, 2021 by an organization calling itself Aryan Freedom Network, and whereas the exact location of said event is not clear at this time, but the online advertisement for said event and media reports about it indicate that it will be held in Longview, Texas, whereas based on the racially charged language contained in said advertisement and the name of the group and the name of the event, it appears that the group is a hate group and the event is a white supremacist rally. And whereas the city council and citizens of Longview are proud of the diversity of this city and its residents, the city council and residents of this city have worked hard to nurture and celebrate the diversity of this community, and the city council and residents of this city do not condone hate groups of any kind and reject and condemn bigotry in all forms. And the city council and the residents of the city of Longview want the world to know that there is no room in this city of Longview for racism, hatred, or bigotry of any kind. The city council finds use of the name Longview, Texas, in connection with hate groups or events sponsored by such groups as offensive and detrimental to the city, so now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Longview, Texas, Section 1, that the findings set forth in the preamble of this resolution are hereby and all things approved and adopted, Section 2, the city of Longview does not condone hate groups and rejects and condemns bigotry of any kind. Section 3, the city council disapproves of and condemns the White Unity Conference allegedly planned to be held on September 25, 2021 in or near the city of Longview by an organization calling itself the Aryan Freedom Network. The city council disapproves and of and condemns any other event celebrating or promoting racism, hatred, or bigotry of any kind. Section 4, the city of Longview disapproves of and condemns the use of the name Longview, Texas, in connection with hate groups or in connection with events or materials associated with such groups, including without limitation in promotional materials or the events described herein. Section 5, the city of Longview hereby demands that the organizers of the event described herein remove all references to the city of Longview from any and all materials associated with said event or said group. Section 6, the meeting at which this resolution was approved was in all things conducted in strict compliance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. This resolution shall become effective immediately from and after its passage. That is the resolution in its entirety. Make a motion. Is there any discussion?
I would like to say something, Mayor Matt.
Absolutely.
Definitely. Good evening, everyone. And I was not questioning your integrity. As a woman of color, a black woman, I see things differently. Whether verified or unverified, when I hear the words KKK or white supremacy, there's a certain thing that happens within me that I think I have to address. So I felt that I had a responsibility to the citizens of Longview, especially to those that look like me, to address the issue, dealing with this. So in saying that, I honestly don't know if I would have changed anything in the way that I, when I posted what I posted, because I was getting the phone calls, and I know, as I said, as a black woman and people that look like me, the fear happened. It was real. It occurred. So just wanted to be able to let you know. I do respect you as mayor and as a friend, and as I said, I don't question your integrity. You're not the entire city of Longview. There may be some that think differently, so I had a need to do that.
Thank you, Adina.[1437.33][1437.33](applause).
I would just say one thing real briefly, real briefly. I am very proud of the council for considering and adopting this resolution. I moved to Longview 15 years ago, and I think that everyone in this room would agree that the very best thing about Longview is the people. We do in fact love each other, just like the mayor said, and I think we have a responsibility to each other when someone asks for something that we respond as necessary. So I hope that we will continue to love each other and love our community just as, in my opinion, we have always done. And although ceremonial, I do hope that if necessary, this conversation would shine a light on any events that may take place. Hopefully, they don't take place, of course, but if they do, I hope this shines a light in that area. And I think we need to be very clear that hatred, racism, and bigotry are not welcome in Longview.[1492.83][1492.83](applause).
I don't think the language could be any stronger or more clearly defined than what this resolution states. And Jim, Mr. Finley, we appreciate your time and effort on this resolution. I think you have covered the bases in all aspects, and I feel confident this will serve as a document that we can refer to for, hopefully, never again if we need to. But if we need to, we've got it. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
A motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now to sit and comment. I do have a number of speaker cards. There is no particular order here. If I call your name and you want to speak on a different item, I haven't gone through all these cards quite yet, but if this isn't something you want to speak of now, if it's a zoning item or something, let me know and we'll come back to you, okay? I will start with Chris Fraser.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Fraser. I do understand that I have three minutes. I am not here to bash you. I understand-
Mr. Fraser, can I just remind everybody? I'm sorry, sir.
You're fine.
When you come to the podium, please start his time over as well, please. Please state your name and address, okay?
So my name is Chris Fraser. I'm a resident here of Longview, Texas. I've been here since 2015. I come not to attack you, but if we're talking about we love our neighbors, I think it's important to educate our neighbors. I think it's important to say that you say you don't see color. It's obvious that the room sees that I'm a man of color, and I think that's insensitive. I'm not going to say any crazy slurs at you because I give you the respect as the mayor of Longview, Texas. Also thinking that if we stand for unity and we have a diverse community and we say that we don't stand for hate, that is no tolerance here in Longview. There are still monuments here in the city of Longview that represent hate. I'm not saying that, hey, let's go raid. I'm not about that. I'm a person of, let's talk about it. Let's educate one another. Hey, it may not be insensitive to you, but it's insensitive to other people, marginalized people, people of color, and I urge the city of Longview to do something about that because it is a large representation of people in Longview that are wanting you to make that change. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.[1637.96][1637.96](applause). Darren Rudolph.
My name is Darren Rudolph, 30 wild at Longbury, Texas. I've been in Longbury for 50 years. To address, first of all, this racism that's coming to the city of Longbury, this is where you can't stop them from having it at their property, but this is where the back-to-blue need to step up. Because what the back-to-blue need to do is they need to do what they do to us when you leave a party. Have a police there to get their license plates, but not signal them, to get their license plate for speeding. Once you get their license plate and stuff and let the people of Longbury know who they are, then you identify them. Once you identify them, then the people in Longbury know who their snakes are and they know how to deal with their snakes. When you start, if they bold enough to put it in the paper, we ought to be bold enough as citizens to back the people of Longbury and say, "We don't want it." Because 99% of the people that come in and doing this do not live in Longbury, and we need to let them know we do not want that in Longbury. Another thing that's getting us off the focus of voting, we got to vote. We must vote. Brother Ray Wade, I'm not putting you on the spot, but you need to come to the people of Longbury and let them know where the voting location is going to be for Broad and Recreation Center ASAP, because that's the number-one place for us to vote. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir.[1739.83][1739.83](applause). Robin Mclemore.
Good evening, council and everyone that's here to address this organization that wants to come to Longview.
Name and address, sir.
Okay, excuse me. Robin Mclemore, 28 North Green Street. I believe that this group does have a right to assemble, because if we deny them, then when another group wants to form and assemble theyself, then that just gives people ammunition to deny us. You know, this is where, I think Rudolph just said, this is where the blue needs to step up. The city, the state, national, do we have the re- The city, the state, national, do we have the resources to police this organization? Do we have the funding? I'm for justice, and I believe that they do have a right to assemble, because I would hate to be denied my right to assemble. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michelle Gamboa.
My name's Michelle Gamboa, and I live at 317 Bridgers Hill Road, Longview, Texas. I'm here, I'm a part of a lot of organizations, but I'm here just speaking for myself as an immigrant from Mexico. So I moved here to Longview twenty years ago from Mexico. I believe Longview to be a beautiful and loving place. Although I'm not immune to experiencing racism or prejudice, I do believe that it's important to address, whether verified or not, when hate groups come to our city. I believe that everyone has the right to assemble freely if that does not include violence. I think that as people and as citizens of Longview, we must stand for what is right, and that's loving one another, being kind to one another, forming unity around one another, and making sure that we link around our neighbors and show them that we love our neighbor as ourselves. I want to really thank all the council members and you, Mayor Mack, for allowing me to be here today and address you guys. I just wanted to give my perspective as an immigrant, as a Latina, and also as just someone who has experienced hate in the past, but wanted to make it clear that I see this as the perfect opportunity for Longview to make a statement, not only citywide, not only locally, but statewide and nationwide, that we are a beacon of hope, we are a lighthouse on a hill, and that whether verified or not, we have a duty to condemn anyone who would dare threaten our citizens. I do really greatly appreciate you, Mayor Mack, making it clear that it was an unverified rally, so that everyone knows it was unverified. And for future reference, I will make sure that I call everyone and do my due diligence in order to figure out that research, but sometimes as a normal citizen, you don't know where to get that information per se, or you may not know who to ask. So I really appreciate you bringing light to that to educate the rest of us on how to do that proper research. But lastly, I would just really like to leave with everyone that violent hatred and tolerance of anybody's cultures, religions, or beliefs is not tolerated, and I'm very proud of the City of Longview, even though, sorry, I'm so Mexican, ceremonious, ceremonial, whatever, for adopting this resolution, because I think it speaks volumes on you guys. And as someone who has, you know, experienced some prejudice in the past, that is not who Longview is, that is not what Longview stands for, and I really applaud you guys for adopting this resolution. Thanks, and giga.
My name is Mondale Stoker, and I'm 1207 Temple Street, Longview, Texas. I'm here representing, I guess, the NWC P, Windsor Coleman, and we have a meeting tonight, so Zoom, so he couldn't be here. And I just thought that I agree with just about everything that the mayor has said already. It's not verified. Sky is not falling, as I know of. And we just have to be careful as people. We just got to be careful and not just jump when someone says something, because you have a computer, right? You use a missile. I hear everybody talking about the missile. We have a computer, and it hasn't been scanned yet. Do you want to continue? Right? Is that what the computer says? So we got to have the same way with life. It haven't been scanned yet, or do you want to continue? So let's just wait, and I think the mayor, I think the leadership will take the appropriate actions at the appropriate time if something happened. And I seen that for some reason, we don't want to wait for that. And I hate that. I'm almost embarrassed for this speech, that we are better than that, and we are. I think the people in Longview are better than that. I think we've got more sense in that. It could have been anyone could have put that on the computer. We don't know who it was. But I got to have faith in my leaders to take the appropriate actions at the appropriate time. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Shalonda Adams.
Shalonda Adams, 115 South Castle Street. So good evening, most of you are my friends, Mayor Mack and the council members. I am Shalonda Wilcott Adams, and I stand before you as a citizen of this great city, Longview, Texas, and also as a representative of our Partners in Prevention, Unity, and Diversity Committee. Being one of the most recent honorees of the Unity Honors Award, it is indeed my social responsibility to stand and speak out on behalf of the citizens of our esteemed city. So often when real and sustained change is initiated and is truly manifesting in a situation being our city, there's often a disruption that will either prove that the work is impactful or that it is superficial and fleeting. Council, I want to encourage you to keep doing the work that makes a difference and to continue to respond with wisdom and gravity to promote unity and diminish division and chaos in our community. What you focus on, it does get stronger, and the way we respond is paramount. Continue to respond with love as the focus. With that being said, I'd like to take this opportunity to express my gratitude and appreciation to each and every one of you for whatever your role has been, for bringing us to this place and time. Thank you to those who have personally made a denouncement of any hate-based organization having activity in our city. Thank you for passing this resolution denouncing the potential assembly of the so-called White Unity Conference in our city and surrounding community. As Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. stated, darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. So I continue to say, one Longview, if we may support any future works to move our city forward, please let us know in this regard, and we are willing to serve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carol Greenwald.
So I'm Carol Greenwald. I reside at 345 Betty Jo Drive. I'm a proud citizen of the Longview area and a proud member of the Unity and Diversity Committee, part of the Partners in Prevention organization that we all know and care so much about. It's a real privilege to speak with you all tonight on behalf of this issue. And Mayor Mack, thank you so much for your impassioned response this evening, but we come out of respect for all of you and your integrity, recognizing that each of us loves Longview and each of us are committed to promoting unity and diversity among all of our citizens, and so we very much endorse what you have done tonight. We were encouraged that the City Council of Paris, Texas enacted a similarly strong, strongly worded resolution, and that this group, whether probing, whether real, whoever they are, decided to move from that venue and suddenly selected our area. So all of us rise in response to that because we love Longview, not because we think we are falling apart or that we are not a organization and a community that promotes diversity, but quite the contrary, that we're proud of who we are, we're proud of the progress that we've made, and we do not want the name of Longview inexorably linked to this sort of hate or this sort of evil. And because of that, we rise, and we rise in support of you, and we thank you for your action tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ted Beard. Honored to have you here, Ted. Ted's a school board member for Longview ISD.
Good evening. Ted Beard, Longview, Texas, 1211 John Longview, Texas. As Mayor Mack just mentioned, I'm a fellow elected individual, just like all of you. Thank you for what you do and the service to the City of Longview. It's about service in what you do. I'll make this quick. First, as I sat back here, a comment was made about not seeing color. After almost spending thirty years in the military, two combat missions, not being able to see color, you can't distinguish certain items, be it either a target, enemy, friend, foe, able to operate certain pieces of equipment. To be able to see color, then you're able to understand the differences that, and respect the differences, that individuals in this particular context that it was made, when you can see color, you can respect those of color and of different color. So as a point, don't ever say you don't see color. I do agree. I agree. A comment was made, there's a lot of work to do, and there is. Those of you here may know that recently, I've had a lot of tragedy in my life with my grandson recently being murdered here in Longview, and then my father just recently passed away after ninety-three years. And so I say that as a fellow elected member. Longview ISD stepped out amongst the three elected bodies within this city. Longview ISD stepped out last year to address, supported a resolution to denounce the George Floyd killing, and also to, and it wasn't easy, and it didn't go all rosy, the statue, the Confederate statue at the courthouse grounds. You as a body corporate, is my time up?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Beard. Okay, please forgive me. Karita Dunkoff.
I'm real close to him, Matt. I respect you.
Thank you. I've been haggling with this since I saw the card. When am I going to do this, you know?
No, not if you're close. That's supposed to mean, Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Karita Dunkoff. I have been a resident of Longview for twenty-one years.
Address.
Oh, yes. I don't like to give my whole address. Y'all don't be trying to find me. 302 Beverly, but don't look for me. So I first want to say thank you to all of you for passing this resolution. I mean, it's clear that not all of you are on the same page regarding how necessary it was, but you did it, and I think all of us here appreciate that. Thank you, Councilwoman Snotty and Councilwoman Ishihara. Your statements in particular in the paper meant something to me as a citizen, as a resident, as a mother of two boys who are in this public school system. Thank you for that. And I hope that that resolution that you have now passed has the same impact on Longview that it had on Paris. Maybe it was unverified, undocumented, but Paris City Council came together, made a resolution, and then they announced they were moving what they were trying to do there here. So hopefully, they'll take that madness somewhere else. Okay. My name is Karita Dunkoff, and I have been a resident of Longview for twenty-one years. I was a high school English teacher for ten years. I have two kids in Longview's public schools, and I am president of the nonprofit This Is Us United Supporters. The vision of This Is Us is to empower underserved communities to eradicate racial and social injustice by providing the tools, support, and knowledge to create meaningful and lasting change. Our mission is to drive effective engagement and communication between elected officials and the community to promote inclusion, diversity, and to eliminate inequality. The citizens of Longview comprise a diverse community with a common interest in promoting dialogue and interaction between people amid, not in spite of, but amid differences in race, ethnicity, religious, nonreligious, or sexual identity for the sole purpose of lifting up and protecting one another. The purpose and goals of the white supremacy movement, and by extension, the purpose and goals of the announced White Pride Conference that participants wish to have in our city, are antithetical to the diverse makeup and best interests of the citizens of Longview, Texas. This Is Us United Supporters condemns white supremacy and the ideology of hate and division. We do not welcome the Aryan Nation Network or any organization affiliated with this group and the White Unity Conference. We oppose any private or public gathering to promote white supremacy or hate of any kind within our city limits and within the limits of Gregg County, Texas. We call on the mayor, City Council of Longview, and the commissioners of Gregg County to remove from our city and county properties all monuments that were erected to uphold and amplify white supremacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb McAllister-Holland.
Will excuse me, Paul, may I stand?
Take your time.
My husband and I are relatively new residents of Longview. We moved here a year ago last week.
Name and address.
It's Deb McAllister-Holland. I live at 1010 Trail Wood Lane. I'm a taxpayer for several properties here in Longview, and I think you've done a really good job, and the previous speaker has done a really good job of addressing the hatefulness of this group and their desires. I'd like to talk about money. I'd like to talk about the high cost of allowing a group like that to come into our town. This is something that I had the opportunity to research on behalf of a foundation last year. The average cost to the city of allowing a Ku Klux Klan rally or a white supremacist rally is $504,000, and that's assuming that there are no deaths among the law enforcement community. That covers police overtime, first responder activity, and damage to public property, as well as the cleanup costs. Because let's face it, hateful people generally litter a lot. So I would urge you to take the next step after your resolution and consider requiring a bond for any group which has a history of violence and a history of racism or hatred, because courts have repeatedly held that it's reasonable and it is not an infringement on someone's First Amendment rights to require them to post a bond to cover the city's cost. I don't want them here. You don't want them here. Maybe there's something else we can do to keep them from coming back. It's been one hundred and two years to the week since the Longview massacre, the race riots, where the black section of town was burned. I don't want anything like that. You don't want it. Let's do what we can to keep them away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Chelsea Laurie.
I'm a resident of Gregg County. Do I have to say my address?
It's okay.
Yes. Okay, it's okay. Cool. Let me fix myself. Okay. When I heard the news about the conference that's supposed to take place, ironically a few days before the one hundredth anniversary of the KKK parade, that was October 1st of 1921 here, I was disappointed, but I was far from surprised. In fact, when I hear about things coming to Longview or being in Longview or even being around Longview, I'm disappointed, but I'm not surprised. Longview is a beautiful city, but we can't pretend that white supremacy does not exist here. The city has been a hotspot for bigotry for over a hundred years, and there's proof of that. The fact that people can so easily believe that white supremacists would come here is because some of them are here. There's hate symbols that are still here because there's a refusal by people in power to do something about it. The difference this time is that people here are not standing by when they see something that's wrong. This resolution may be ceremonial, but it means a lot, it means more than a lot of people may know. It means that Longview is progressing. It means that Longview is making an effort to distance itself from its past instead of hoping that the effects of it will magically go away, and I hope Longview continues to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Veezy.
I was a whole lot braver before I walked in. You guys are packed out in here.
We know the feeling.
My name is Amanda Veezy. I live at 112 Brookway Lane here in Longview. As grateful as we are for the decision that was made by you that was made by you guys tonight to draft the resolution and sign off on that and stand up against the hate group known as KKK, I'm really saddened also by this resolution. As a community, I think we recognize the effort. I think all of us recognize the effort that was put forth by council and really appreciate that to protect our community and the fine citizens here. But we can't recognize the effort and the sharp reaction that you guys took without also acknowledging the need to take that action. That acknowledges the need to combat hate and acknowledgement of racism, both abroad and right here in our own community. This is where we raise our children. This is where we go to church. This is where we live out our dreams. It's an acknowledgement that we have to stare in the face of this every single day. We have made much, much progress, but not quite enough. I keep finding myself saying, "I can't believe we're still battling this in 2021." It is 2021. But the reality is, we are, and we're here. While I consider us to be freedom people and stand proud of our community and our country for fighting for our neighbor's right to disagree with us, I also understand that there comes a time when freedom is no longer that. When our freedom brings harm to our neighbors, it's not freedom at all, it's oppression. I'm saddened by where we are. I'm saddened for the road, for the need to have this conversation, and I'm saddened to consider a hate rally part of our rights as a citizen of the United States. I have to admit, I almost laughed when I saw the phrase "white unity rally." There can be no such thing. True unity does not exist without all parts of the whole. Humanity is one. We're all Earth citizens. We're all one family, every culture, every color. I come as a representative of this community today. My organization, One Love Longview, is responsible for the Unite Rally. It's a counter-rally on August 14th, 2021. I've called for Republicans. Michelle Gamboa is here and spoke. Carita, who has also joined our team. Democrats, libertarians, politically homeless, black, white, Latina, Asian, Indian, LGBTQ, straight, Christian, atheist, Buddhist, Unitarians, individuals with special needs in every amazingly beautiful part of this community that's full of life, cover, color, creativity, and beauty who deserve to have a seat at the table where true unity exists. I think it's evident today. There we go.
John T. Smith, IV, 101 Falcon Way. God's word has a, let's, if I may, let's redefine unity from God's perspective. Psalms 133:1, I believe, says, "How good and pleasant for brethren," and sisters too, "to dwell together in unity." That's some unity I can get behind. What is more, we have to recognize that there are people who do see color, Mayor Mack, respectfully. And the enemy is making divisions through that color. When we ask you to recognize our color, we're asking you to recognize that the color of our skin comes with certain cultural experiences that you need to recognize. Sir, it is ridiculous to go out and look at God's rainbow and say, "Oh, that indigo band is beautiful, but I'm just gonna choose to not see color with the red band and then still respect God's rainbow." How incensed and insulting would the Father, the Creator of the rainbow, be if we say, "We just choose not to acknowledge that band or spectrum of color?" And yet, I know that you've got a good heart because I can discern the fruit of the Spirit in you. Love, joy, peace, patience, temperance, and the passion that comes with all that. I recognize that, I see that. And because of that, I call you my brother. And who is my brother? Is my brother the same one that has the same skin complexion as I do? Is my brother the same one that has the same political party affiliation as I do? Is my brother my fraternity brother? Are the Knights of Pithius, are those my brothers? My Father in Heaven reminds me that he who does the will of my Father in Heaven, that one's my brother. So I may or may not have fellowship with those who are not on the same body as I'm coming from with God, defining unity and defining, "Who's our brother?" But I'm encouraged because we're here. And there is a brotherhood, and there is a unity of spirit here that is undeniable. But I'm also disappointed. And here's the crux of what I need to say. I'm disappointed because, Mayor Mack, we should have seen this coming. Here's why we should have seen it coming. And I'm gonna say, I know that there are some media representatives here for M. Roberts Media, and I have been a blogger of some time, and I've come at, Only Sun was the blog a few years ago, and I wrote some things that were incendiary and that were divisive. I was angry. But I also wrote some things that were quite true. One, August 7, 2016, please allow me just one 30-second longer, please, with a cherry on top.
Mr. Mack, can I go ahead and yield my time to this gentleman? Would that be appropriate or not?
Can't do that. I give you 15 seconds, okay?
August 7, 2016, the Longview News Journal read and put an article that said, "KKK, 150 Years of KKK." And I have to say, I agree with you in taking some responsibility. What was the purpose of that? We have an official mayor, or a former mayor, that put his two cents in in the public newspaper and said, "We need to have the Confederate statue stand." And in spite of the fact that young people came together and said, "That incenses us." We should have seen this coming, sir. Three months ago, we had Confederate parades going up and down the Loop 281 in Gilmer Road when paramilitary. We should have seen it coming.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. I'm Steve Crane, 3805 Tree Top Lane. Ted, I was gonna try and yield my time to you, but as we know, I can't. So I'm just gonna say this very briefly. And it's been said a couple of different ways before, but I wanna say it from a white person's standpoint. A good friend of mine said, "You know, Steve, when people tell me they don't see color, they're telling me they don't see me." Pretty clear. You know, I get the understanding behind the words, but you need to be careful about how they're perceived. So this is an educational lesson, I think, for all of us, white folks, black folks, everybody. I wanna say thank you to the city council for passing the resolution because now the world knows where we stand. It's unequivocal. Why we had to go through all this fighting to get to this point, I'm not quite sure I understand why. But I'm just glad we got here. I know it wasn't an easy choice. I know you took a lot of hits, Mr. Mayor. But that's, you know, you got elected to the position. You got a pretty tough skin. You can take it. And, you know, it just comes with the territory. But you made the right decision, and for that, I'm grateful. And before I go, I just wanna say one thing. When I supported you, your first election, and I worked for you, and I worked very hard, and you know how hard I worked. I've never been disappointed. Well, I may have disagreed a lot about some of the decisions you made. But I've always talked to you personally about those disagreements, when I had those disagreements. And I wanna say that I know you took a hit when you first got elected and you passed that proclamation to the council to lift up the gay pride event. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you doing that. You kept your word. So I know that you can be a man of your word, and I'm really grateful again to say that you passed a resolution that needed to be passed a long time ago, but it's done now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, your writing is worse than mine. Is it Sarah or Susan Foy or Fox?
Sarah Fox.
Are you a doctor? Because this writing's terrible. I'm sorry, I'm just teasing with you. Little levity here, need a little levity.
No worries.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Sarah Fox. I live in Wellington Grand. Do I need to state the address? Okay, thank you. Mayor Mack, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Thank you for, councilmembers, for being here for our community today. I've been a resident of Longview for about three years now, and I am at home. I love this community. I'm involved in Longview organizations. But I'm speaking as an individual tonight. I wish to stand in unity with all of my fellow citizens of Longview. M. Roberts Media and the Longview News Journal made a conscious choice to publish an article intended to divide, spread hate, and terrorize those who this alleged hate group targets. Mayor Mack, I do see color. How can you not? And I say that with love because we are all unique and different and come from all walks of life. Seeing color acknowledges that our life experiences are different. I saw One Love Longview unite in response to organize a Unite Rally for the city of Longview. And we're excited to unite. I applaud Amanda for uniting us to come together to condemn hate and spread love. Again, thank you for your time and dedication to our city. And thank you for passing this resolution today.
Hello, I'm Kelly Mack. I live at 9 Thorntree, Longview, Texas, 75601. And I just want to say, on behalf of Andy and other white people that say, "We don't see color," we're basically saying, "We don't see color in who we invite into our lives, into our homes." Our children have friends of all colors. We encourage our children to have friends of all colors and to love all people. And so I think that is something we shouldn't say, "We don't see color," because obviously, we do. But we just want you to understand, it's, "We don't see color in who we have in our lives and who we invite into our hearts." Also want to say that as white people, we will never fully understand your heritage, and we will never know how exactly to respond. But I think, you know, y'all have to show us grace too and help us to understand and help us to learn in order to change our world and help our young people just see love. Because this division is not helping the people below us. All these hateful remarks, which I don't get on Facebook, but all this hateful stuff I hear that's on Facebook, I'm just appalled. People need to get something better to do with their time, you know? This is just ridiculous. The other thing I wanted to say that we, rather than lead by or represent by the color of our skin, I think we need to lead as Christians. And if we lead as Christians, then this world will be a better place, and our city.
Mr. Ed Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Ed Moore, 707 Willowood Street. I used to work for the city. Let me change the subject and start off by reading the vision statement from our comprehensive plan. "To be a premier community promoting education, business opportunities, and cultural diversity, capitalizing on our heritage and natural beauty while focusing on families and healthy living and creating a safe, welcoming environment that attracts vibrant people to call Longview Home." This all involves enhancing the quality of life in our community. Every one of our bond projects that we're undertaking, whether it be public safety with our police station and fire station, improved thoroughfares with sidewalks and bike lanes, the new entryway at South Marbury, all have something to do with enhancing the quality of life. Our trail system is gonna be completed soon. We've dedicated almost $25 million of our bond proceeds to improve our existing parks. What we are woefully short of is neighborhood parks throughout the community. I remember counting at one time that West Longview alone could handle, could use an additional 13 neighborhood parks. I would like to propose the creation of a park development fund to be financed from interfund transfers from general fund revenue. I do not propose an increase in building permit fees or developer costs, but I would like to see us make a commitment to make these transfers every year. As far as an amount to transfer, as the community grows, so does the demand for parks. And let me suggest that for every certificate of occupancy that is issued in the prior calendar year for new construction residential units, we deposit $500 into this account. It'll take a while to build up, but we've gotta start somewhere. I had hoped to offer this idea last year, but of course, the pandemic just devastated our revenue stream. I just urge the council to make a commitment to make developing new neighborhood parks in our community a priority everywhere so neighborhoods now that don't have one can enjoy the benefits of neighborhood parks in the future. That's an intimidating clock.
Don't make me buzz you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Always a privilege to have you in our council chambers. We have concluded this portion of the agenda. I know you all wanna sit around and hear our budget talks, and I'm really thrilled that you wanna do that. But I'll give you a one-minute recess if anyone wants to leave the council chambers while we conduct the rest of our meeting. We'll adjourn for about one minute. We'll adjourn for about one minute. Okay, we're now called back into order. We'll begin with our public safety update. Chief Bishop?
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Bonds, thanks for giving me the opportunity to update you since our last meeting. I'd like to start out, first of all, I didn't know the fire chief was going to be here tonight, but he just kind of strolled in. But on behalf of myself and Chief Steelman, want to send out a special thanks to Julie Woods and the Hooray for Heroes for the parade and the recognition that they showed for the first responders a few weeks ago. All the sponsors that came together to support that organization. We can't thank them enough for coming out and showing their support. I'd like to specifically thank Kevin Hawkins with Divine Catering Food Truck. Some of the sponsors for the event sponsored him to come down to the police department and feed the police and firemen after the after the event. So I just want to, again, thank the Hooray for Heroes and those that are involved for coming out and supporting us and providing the meal for the for the police and fire. It's greatly appreciated. With the lifting of COVID, we're back into our summer camps and we're glad to have partnered with Laterno University again this year to provide a summer camp for the kids. We did this last week and we were able to spend some time with the kids and do some bicycle safety, give them a tour of the police department. And I don't know why, but the golf cart that we have seemed to be the item of interest on this tour here. And they got to go over to the municipal courtroom and spend time with Judge Merriman and learn a little bit about the court system and how that operates. I want to give a shout out to David Cooley and April Barnard and all the employees with Boss Crane. Last month, they reached out to us and wanted to hold a fundraiser for our Blue Santa program. During that event, they had a cornhole tournament that lasted way into the wee hours of the next morning. They saw the Blue Santa program last year and wanted to reach out and support that. Last week, Mr. Cooley and Ms. Barnard came down and presented the Blue Santa project, a check for $13,000. So I want to thank them. That's going to go a long ways for us to help those families in need, especially around the holidays. So I want to thank him for doing that. I'd also like to thank Marbury Baptist Church. Last week, they kicked off their Serve Day. They came down to the station and provided lunch for the members of the police department. So I certainly want to thank the group of individuals from Marbury that came down and provided us with a lunch. As a reminder, we're getting ready to, we are accepting applications for our Citizens Police Academy. That'll begin September 9th. It'll run on Tuesday and Thursday nights from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Those that are interested can download an application at longviewtexas.gov/cpa. If you're interested in learning more about the police department and how we operate, we'd be glad to have you come. Also, two more important dates. Tuesday, September 7th is going to be our National Night Out kickoff party at ModCom. We didn't have any National Night Out parties last year, so we need those neighborhoods that have neighborhood crime watch groups or those that just host an annual National Night Out party. Please put this date on your calendar, come on out, and register your party for the National Night Out event that will take place on Tuesday, October 5th. And years past, we've had close to 100 National Night Out parties, and that's our goal. We want to get our neighborhoods back connected again and get to where we can come out and visit with the various parties throughout the city. So that'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Bishop? Thank you, sir. Chief Steelman, good to see you. Know your update. Glad you're back home safely. Thank you. How's that girl sitting next to you, too? We're now at a consent agenda. Any items council would like to be pulled off for separate discussion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're announced to zoning. We have a public hearing. Help to consider application Z 21-12. Ms. Choi?
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Bonds. The applicant is requesting a rezone for lots 1 through 3, Block A of Judson Heights subdivision from a single-family 4 to General Retail Zoning District located at 4500 Judson Road. The applicant, currently the property owner, does own this property but is leasing it to a landscape business that would like to do an addition. Judson Road is classified as a principal arterial roadway and retail development is appropriate along these roadways as long as access management is followed. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
There's a require of a public hearing which is now open. Any speakers or comments in this public hearing?
Ms. Choi, I drove by there and I noticed there is residents in the next lot.
Yes, sir.
And those folks don't have any issues with what's planned there?
They did come out during the planning and zoning commission meeting, and I believe they spoke to Mr. Zachary and they they had some concerns, but I think they were resolved at the last meeting.
Well, we have a speaker?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. And I do have a card here.
That's fine.
Filled out. Thank you for the resolution to Mayor Mack, city manager, and council members. My name is Carrie Hunter, and I live at 105 Collins Avenue, Longview, Texas, 75605. I'm here this evening to express my opposition of the request for rezoning. I do live next door to the business in question. And back in May of this year, the new tenant, we noticed a foul nitrate gassy odor neighbors and I did. And we know that this nitrate has a high level and can be toxic to livestock and humans and can cause various illnesses. These fumes are concerning to me because there are babies and others in the neighborhood with pre-existing illnesses. I am for anyone providing for their family. However, I am opposed to any manure, fertilizer, or other substances that will cause harm and ill health to others in our community. Although the decision probably has already been made prior to the meeting, I ask that you disapprove the rezoning request. This does not have anything to do with the owner, Mr. Zachary, and I mentioned that within the planning and zoning committee. I thank you for allowing me to speak concerning this matter. And thank you for your continuous service and support of our City of Longview communities.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Any more comments to Ms. Choi during this public hearing? If not the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Let me just ask something. Does anybody have any information on the odor this lady was smelling?
Yes, please. Just take your name and address. Thank you, sir.
Greg Zachary. I'll give my dad's address, 1501 Creek? Yes, Creek Lane. Thank you, Ms. Hunter, for your concern. I know the last time we did talk about that and asked if you would talk to the tenant, have you talked to Ty?
I did not because what I smelled was not pretty.
Okay, because our agreement was is if there was anything that would be of concern that would be addressed, that would be anything harmful to the neighborhood or unpleasant to the neighborhood. And so I'd say on behalf of my dad, he will talk to Ty, and I think there's anything that would be concerning will be addressed. He's very careful about his business. He's very organized. He's very sensitive. He's very clean. He has done some measures already to provide some barriers so that it wouldn't be offensive in any way. And so, Ms. Hunter, you have our commitment that we will make sure that nothing is done that would would be a harm to the neighbor. I do think you mentioned at the last meeting there was a portage on across the street that could be the source of the odor, so.
It was not.
Okay.
It was not.
Okay, well, that's all I would say on behalf of my dad as the owner and his two sons, that we are committed to try to be good neighbors. And we would address that. I know he is part of the reason for this change is to build a structure to house the fertilizer in, which would also give greater barrier to any fertilizer smells that could be escaping to the neighborhood. So that is the purpose. You can see the fertilizer is outside there, but the new structure, it will be inside and contained.
And again, the fertilizer was not in those bags. It was in the
Thank you both for being here and thank you for your willingness to resolve this issue, Mr. Zachary and Ms. Hunter. Hopefully you all can come, they'll take care of the issues that are concerning here. Yes.
I have a question. Ms. Choi, has anyone from your department actually been out to the area to verify the things that Ms. Hunter is stating that's there, the nitrogen, or was it the nitrogen?
Yeah, we've gone out there. We have not actually gone on the side to smell it, but we can, we can go out there with Ms. Hunter.
Not only the smell, but attest as well to verify what is there.
Can I say something? Yes, ma'am.
And again, as I mentioned. As I mentioned in my statement, that was back in May, we did not smell that odor again. I was looking for my neighbor who also could attest to the fact that it was manure, so you might want to talk with them to verify. But that particular smell is no longer there.
Okay.
So it could have been a temporary thing.
Gotcha.
Or whatever.
There's no way to test the grounds or anything? Because I think what she's saying is that it's seeping into the system there, right? The water and everything else, correct?
Right.
That's what you're ultimately afraid of.
We changed filters.
Right.
AC filters because it was all in the house.
Correct.
And again, my neighbor can attest to that because they were the ones that really told me exactly what it was. I did think it was the body.
But we've had no issues since May, correct, Ms. Hunter?
Not for that sin.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Thank you so much, ma'am. Okay. So, any other questions about, before I close this public hearing? Public hearing is now closed.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Let me, Ms. Hunter, I'm your city councilman. If you have any other issues out there, please let me know and I will talk with these folks and we'll try to make sure that everything gets taken care of, okay?
And thank you for being a reasonable neighbor, and thank you all for being reasonable neighbors too. We don't usually get people that actually agree up here. So thank you all so much. We appreciate that very much. We can all work together. Thank you so much. Okay, we're now at the budget presentation, fiscal year 2021. Mr. Bonds?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to present the budget. I'll try to be brief. I'd like to thank all our managers and directors for working so hard on this budget and helping me prepare, and especially our budget team, Mary Ann Miller, Sean Herra, Angela Cohen, and Roland McFeasenew this year. So it's really easy using those guys to help me out. I'm going to cover the following things this evening real quickly. I'd like to review this past fiscal year, our revenue sources, the reserve fund balance, direction for the coming up fiscal year, a little bit about the American Rescue Plan Act funds, or ARPA, and we'll look at the budget calendar real quick. So 2020, no one's surprised. It only got one star, very bad. So 7 billion people found this review helpful, so we're glad to get that one behind us. Joe Torre said, unless you have bad times, you can appreciate the good times. So hopefully, our appreciation of the upcoming times will be better. So local economy has been recovering very well from the COVID-19 pandemic impacts. The sales tax revenues have really gone up. Well, sales tax are stable and continuing to go up. This past year, we were assisted by CARES Act funding. We had about $1 million. We used last fiscal year, 3.5 million. This year, we used available fund balance from the general fund during this recovery. We reduced expenditures, which was really tough on everyone. And even more tough, we had over 40 individuals that are positions that were frozen for over a year, only in the general fund, not including police or fire. So goals this year, of course, would be to prioritize the restoring the cuts and the deferred maintenance that took place last year. We plan on restoring to full staff, not adding any staff. We would like to request to implement a 3% across-the-board pay raise. Again, utilizing the American Rescue Plan funds to recover and improve our community. And we are going to minimize financial burdens on the residents, ask for no rate increase in the property tax, water and sewer rates, and a very small increase in sanitation rate, which I'll explain a little bit later. Sales tax roller coaster slide here. So blue bars being the 12-month moving average, the undulating squiggly line, if you will, there is the percent change in the 12-month moving average. So you can see over the years, we've had challenges. And I'd like to point out, the last four months, you really see a steep increase in that, and so that's where we're so glad to see sales tax increasing. So this is another chart that tells the story of our sales tax revenue comparing, starting FY '20, if you will, October 19th to March of '20, we were up $475,000, but April '20 to January '21 lost $906,000. But since February of this year, have surpassed all those losses, up $1.8 million. So property valuations, this time last year, we saw an increase of about 2.2% property values over the previous year. This year, estimates increased 4.5% of the property valuations. We do not have the final numbers from the appraisal district, however, and that should be coming in the next couple of weeks. So because of the increase in value, I'd like to show you something on the matchstick chart here. So red is the debt service of the tax rate and the yellow, the M&amp;O rate. But since the values have increased so much and our debt payments are relatively stable, we were able to decrease the debt rate from 1592 to 1459, which allowed us to increase the M&amp;O rate from 3997 to 4130. So keeping within the 55.89 cents per $100 of valuation. So this will certainly help us further with our recovery. A little bit more about the tax rate, property values. Stays at 55.89. Now, we do not have the no new revenue rate, but due to the increase in values, we do anticipate that no new revenue rate will drop. But we still should be under the voter approval rate, and those numbers will be available to us later on in August. So general fund revenues, $25.87 million from property tax, $24.643 million from sales tax. About 62% of our general fund budget comes from those two revenue sources. $8.7 million are from service fees and fines. We have $7.3 million franchise taxes. And our interfund transfers from our enterprise funds, a little bit over $10 million. So on the expenditure side, on the general fund, police and fire, as you are aware, always have competition, but the police have outstripped them this year. $25.26 million. The fire department, $23.739 million. Both of them do a great job for us. The street department is $6.437 million. Proud to see that our anticipated budgeting for the parks department is up to almost $5 million. Some highlights of next year's budget. We propose to at least purchase a fire truck for Fire Station 3. That's the station at MLK in Birdsong. Also, hopefully be able to fund a traffic signal right down the street at Eastman in Birdsong. This traffic signal has been warranted for quite some time. We just haven't been able to fund it. We're asking that we be able to purchase a piece of software for the We're asking that we be able to purchase a piece of software for the plan reviewers and development services to be able to more easily review their digital plans submittals from developers. The police department wants to implement a piece of software which will allow citizens that have had interactions with the police department to actually give feedback concerning that interaction. So we all know feedback is a gift and so we're proud to see that the police department willing to take that. So adding a restroom at Cargill Long Trail, very popular trailhead that just has a little pavilion there right now. So glad to see that we could be able to fund a restroom at that location, increase in general maintenance of the parks, but just overall allowing us to increase the level of service at all our parks. Again, we implemented 3% across-the-board pay raise and a cost of living increase for retirees, first one since 2013 we've been able to fund. So a little bit about the American Rescue Plan. Congress passed this rescue plan back in March and Longview is slated to receive over $17 million. We've received half of it already, 8.524 million. The second half of it should come no later than one year from now. So funds must be allocated by end of calendar year 2024 and completely spent by end of calendar year 2026. So that's the challenge. The broad category for eligible uses would be to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries. We could provide premium pay to essential workers of the local government or other eligible employers. Government services revenue replacements, to the extent revenue was reduced during the pandemic, or necessary investments to water, sewer, which includes storm sewer or broadband infrastructure. So saying all that, our proposal would be to utilize the revenue replacement, 1.97 million this year. We could calculate 2.08 million next year and for the total, including the next two years, 7.5 total million dollars for revenue replacement. As I said, we did thaw out all of the frozen positions. We were able to utilize $320,000 this fiscal year to rehire staff, 970 million for next fiscal year, brings a total of 1.29 million over the four-year period. Qualified infrastructure projects, so 2.12 million this year, and I'll describe those projects and to be determined in the future, 8.26 more million dollars the next two fiscal years, past the next fiscal year. So projects for the ARPA funds this year, Wade Creek, which is a repair concrete bag wall channel in the Ware Acres subdivision. We need to install some storm sewer along Alta Street, replace a box culvert under Avenue B near its intersection with Fairmont, and to utilize a very generous matching grant from the Sabine River Authority will allow us to install some storm sewer systems at MODCOP. So a little bit about the ending fund balances. So starting October 1, 2020, last year, 15.666 million dollars. Revenues we experienced last year, 76,526,932, including CARES and ARPA funds. Expenditures, however, only 72,673. So it allowed our ending fund balance to grow to 19.5 million dollars. So 19.5 million dollars will start October 1, 2021. Again, our revenue is increasing to 79 million dollars due to the ARPA funds and increase in sales tax and property taxes. And we proposing to spend 78.267 million dollars, which even at that increases the fund balance even further to 20.3 million dollars, which is almost 26% of the expenditures. So as council is aware, we do have a council required minimum fund balance of 10% of the budgeted expenditures, and that is represented by the red line, the red portion of the bars here. The blue portion is the fund balance that we have been able to accumulate over the years that's above the 10%. And during some years, as you're aware, council has chosen to allocate some of that fund balance for one-time expenditures. So you can see in 2022, we're anticipating no use of the fund balance at all while growing it to, like I said, 20.3 million dollars. So real quick about the sanitation rate. Department originally last year requested either a $1.25 rate increase or to eliminate recycling. So we did, actually did neither and we continue to recycle. And but to avoid the rate increase, we utilized a fund for capital, a loan for capital equipment replacement or truck leases. But at that time, we had predicted a rate increase would likely be needed. And since we continue to lease equipment, only a 30 cent rate increase or 1.74% is needed this year. So over the years, October 8th, we had a 65 cent rate increase in sanitation. October 2015, a dollar. February 2020, unusual, mid-year rate increase of $1.25. This year, 30 cents. Bringing the total sanitation rate for the customers, $17.50. So without even showing 17.50, showing 17.20, even if we showed 17.50, we'd still be in the same spot, fairly low comparing rates around the state. So almost through here. General fund, the total budget, starting with the general fund, 78.267 million. Enterprise funds was 44 million dollars, that's water, sewer, sanitation. Special revenue funds would include things such as hotel motel tax, quarter cent sales tax that we use generally use for drainage, the quarter cent sales taxes allocated to Leadco. And the ARPA funds, more importantly, this year, 32.275 million. Internal service funds include the health fund, general liability, fleet services, and information services is 23.22 million dollars. And debt service, self-explanatory, 14 million dollars. So subtracting the inter-fund transfers between the departments, total budget, 167 million, 103,925. So today presenting the councils, the budget to the council, we're going to set these public hearing dates. So we have unfortunately three meetings in a row, Thursdays and August 5th. So budget discussion on the 5th, we'll discuss some fee changes and have a preliminary vote on the tax rate. The 12th, we'll have a preliminary hearing on the budget, I mean a public hearing on the budget, public hearing on the tax rate. We'll adopt the budget, hopefully adopt fee changes and have a separate vote to ratify the rate. And finally, on August 19th, have a special called meeting to adopt the tax rate and we will hear from our friends at Leadco at that meeting. So be glad to answer any questions or hear any comments or complaints, I guess. Yes, sir?
How much, how much, we're going to try to increase the maintenance budget for the parks?
Remember the exact numbers on that. Almost $2 million, say, 1.9 million.
We're going to increase it?
Yes.
Okay. Have one more.
Okay.
On the, on the, on the Avenue B drainage?
Mm-hmm.
At 460, was that, none of that included in the bond?
No, sir.
Okay.
Keith?
Yes, sir.
When do you expect the, we'll start getting sales tax from the gap deal?
I think that's slated to be finished in 2023, maybe?
Okay, so it's not anytime soon.
No.
But one thing that I see in here concerns me a little bit. On your expenditures, you're going from 72 million to 78 million?
Mm-hmm.
And some of that, you're using the one-time American recovery, which is what, 3.5 million?
Almost four.
So next year, we're going to be looking for those funds somewhere else.
Yeah, we'll get ARPA funds next year as well, but yes, that increase is all one-time expenses. But it doesn't have to go, usually our one-time expenses, we get in a bind, fire trucks, things of that nature, and we use some of the reserve fund this year, we didn't have to do that. So, but all of those are one-time expenses.
Those aren't recurring expenses, we have to find again next year, Dave, is that's what you're asking?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like the restroom I talked about.
So that, but that is, where's that going to come from?
The. Just.
Oh, you're going to use the, those, those American recovery funds?
Right, right.
Okay.
Those, those drainage projects I mentioned, the bathroom at the park.
Mr. Carpenter?
Mayor, Keith. This budget cycle, but the next budget cycle, we'll probably complete the bond, correct? So how much of the bond have we borrowed?
About half of it, 51 million dollars. And we're going to issue about 20, something around five-ish this December. And then we still have another 25 million, which will be like in 2023 or something like that.
When, Mayor, do we start paying that back?
Oh, we've already made payments.
We've already started making payments.
Is it in the?
Yes, it's in the debt, 14 million dollars.
In our debt service.
Debt service. Thank you.
Keith, first of all, you know, it's hard to wrap our hands around 167 million dollar budget. It's an incredible amount of money. It's a ton of work and I appreciate the diligence. I hate this time of year, I still know y'all do too, but it's something we have to do. But our economic recovery is evident through our sales tax. Longview's strong, resounding, up 1.8 million dollars. That's a huge number for us. Excellent and conservative budgeting, budgeting that took place last year by all departments. And it's nice when we budget conservatively and we're surprised on the other side, which is great. Rather than over budgeting and not having enough money to pay for it. So I think you ought to commend it on your budget assumptions and it's nice when we exceed those on the positive side. To have no tax rate increase, again, at .5589 is another win for the community because in these hard times as we've been through, it's not unusual to have to go to find monies elsewhere, but you all did a wonderful job. Our fund balance, to have a $12 million excess fund balance right now, once again, is excellent budgeting and conservative spending in our city. So I think you all have done a fantastic job. My applause to everyone involved. It's a long, arduous process that no one likes, but it's something we have to do and I think you all are doing a phenomenal job this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
I'd just like to applaud them. I mean, we all went through a lot last year with COVID and the cutbacks we had to make, the restrictions we had to do. And so it's great to see us kind of rebounding and getting back to normal a little bit.
Thank you, sir.
One, I have one thing. Keith, I think when I started on the council in 2014, the budget was around 164 million or something like that. And now we've gone to a, in seven years, we've gone from 164 million to 167 million.
Right.
I think that's pretty good.
Yeah.
Especially with all the additional insurance and everything. Things have gone through the roof on a lot of our personnel stuff, so, yeah, so I applaud you also.
Very good. Look forward to the rest of the budget process as we go forward, Keith. Thank you so much.
All right.
We're now out of the community interest. Mr. Carpenter?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Ms. Snotty?
Yes, I want to announce that the Longview Football League registration is now open. Registration is free this year, pre-K through sixth grade. You can register at TA Sports, which is located at 2547 Judson Road, right behind the Olive Garden. Registration is Monday through Friday from 10 until 2.
Isn't Trent having a football camp tomorrow?
Friday.
Friday?
Yes, today is the premiere of his documentary, his birthday dinner. And Trent Williams, yes, will have your football camp this Friday from 1 until 4 at the Longview High School.
Very good. Mr. White?
I'd just like to applaud everyone that came out and spoke today during our citizen comment section. I'm a firm believer that our community moves forward the more that everyone gets involved. And unfortunately, it takes a hot topic as we had today to get everyone involved, but I'd like to see this momentum continue, but not only continue with the outspokenness, but with plans and agendas and things of that sort that could help us all improve as a community. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Shahara?
Anything for me?
Mr. Wright?
Yes, I want to say, as Ray did, that I appreciate everybody that came out tonight and your comments. Unfortunately, most everybody's left, but I sure do appreciate it. It's, it's really disappointing that we even have to acknowledge something like that. I think the one thing, the one good thing you can take from it is probably the people who we're acknowledging here aren't very far up the gene pool, so you don't have to hopefully worry about them too much. And then I had, we were at the fireworks show. I don't know how many people went to the fire. Well, I know a lot of people went to the fireworks show that passed forth, but it was wonderful. Several of those folks are my family there and I want to thank, is Julie still here? Julie had a nice comment to make about my grandchildren and I was able to straighten her out. She said they were beautiful kids and I was able to let her know that that was because they mostly looked like me. She, she laughed a little bit, but you know, anyway, I want, it was a great time and the mayor's tent was fantastic.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pertle?
That's for me.
Mr. Bonds?
Well, we did have the freedom fireworks celebration. We had a great time celebrating America's birthday at the fireworks on July 4th. Thanks to all employees who pulled it together, to all the sponsors who helped make the event happen. Check out this finale. It is really something to behold.
It really baffles me every year how it gets better and better. That's, that's an amazing, amazing display of fireworks. It's just, it's unbelievable. And thank you to all those involved, especially our sponsors. We had some great, great sponsors that helped put that on so that this was free to our community and all those around that want to come see it. It's a free event that we put out there for you to come and enjoy. As Keith mentioned, this will be our only meeting this month. Next month, we will meet on August 5th, August 12th, and August 19th. We will not meet on our originally scheduled date of August 26th. And one more thing, as we've all said tonight, tonight was a show of unity. This was not a show of division. People that came here, came here because we all want the same thing. We are a strong community that love each other. We need to continue to show that on everything that we do, every day, every way. So thank you all for being here. We are now adjourned.